Good afternoon, everyone. A call to order, the Santa Barbara City Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, April 12, 2012. And Madam Clerk, would you call the room, please?
Commissioner Thompson?
Present.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Bartlet?
Here.
Vice Chair Jordan?
Here.
Chair Lodge?
Here. Are there, in preliminary manners, any requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items, Mr. Cobb?
Nope.
Any announcements and appeals?
None of those either.
This brings us to the time for public comment on any item that's not on the agenda of the Planning Commission today. Is there anyone, not seeing anyone here, to speak to that? I'll close that part of the meeting and move on to Item 3, concept review of an application of Maria Martinez, architect with Colonel Andrelitis, for Roma Santa Family Living Trust at 101 State Street and 16 West Mason Street, hotel and related commerce coastal overlay. Yes, Mr. Bartlet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, after long consideration, I've felt that it would probably be in best interest for myself to step down from this project as being the architect for the adjacent Entrada Hotel project. We have obviously shared information on a technical level so that this project could be compared, in comparison with the neighborhood. And although I have a lot of knowledge of the neighborhood, I think, you know, it could be construed by some that there might be potential conflict of interest, so to just avoid being on the front page of the paper tomorrow, I'd rather see the project on the front page. I think I will step down, and I know that I have full confidence in my commissioners, that there will be plenty of questions and good consideration here. So I think the project will still be well-served, but I think for my interest, it would probably better to step out of the room. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Bartlet. Commissioner Bartlet will miss your input, but I understand why, the interest of clarity and openness in all of that you're doing this, so thank you. All right. Ms. DeBusk?
Thank you. As you mentioned, this is a concept review of a project located at the corner, at 101 State Street and 16 West Mason Street. Here we have an aerial view of the site, and it's generally located between the railroad tracks and the beach, and specifically, it's located at the intersection of State Street, Mason Street, and Kimberly Avenue. As you see, Mission Creek runs to the west of the project site. The project site is comprised of two lots, one of which is developed with a parking lot, and the other contains a building that's used as a laundry building. The project site is in the city's waterfront area, and here we have some photos of the site as viewed from State Street. These are some views looking up Mason Street. The lower photo is from the Chapala intersection, and the upper photo is at the Kimberly-Mason intersection. Here, we've got some additional photos. The top photo is a view from Kimberly Avenue, looking towards the east, and the bottom photo is a view from Mason Street and Kimberly intersection, looking north. The project involves the demolition of the existing parking lot and laundry building, as well as the merger of the two lots. The proposed development includes the construction of a new three-story hotel, which would contain 34 hotel rooms, as well as a lobby and laundry room, and 34 parking spaces for those rooms. Here's a proposed site plan. However, I will leave the details on the site planning and the architecture to the architect's presentation. So as currently designed, the project would require three front-setback modifications, and those are for the setbacks along State Street, West Mason Street, and Kimberly Avenue. It would also require a development plan for the non-residential development, as well as a transfer of existing development rights for approximately 11,000 square feet of that floor area, and a coastal development permit for development in the coastal zone. The review process for this project so far has included a PRT, which was done in April 2011. The project has also been reviewed twice at a conceptual level by the Historic Landmarks Commission, and today is the conceptual review at the Planning Commission. The next steps for the project would be the submittal of a formal application, and then subsequently, the staff would deem the application complete, and we would commence environmental review, and then the project would return to the Planning Commission for review. Some of the issues related to this project include the Lower Mission Creek Flood Control Project, as well as the Mason Street Bridge Project. These two projects result in the realignment of Mission Creek, as well as Kimberly Avenue, and that realignment occurs right in front of this parcel, which will result in a reduction in the lot size, and therefore affects the development on-site. Views of the mountains are another issue, and I just wanted to discuss the development plan a little bit. This chart identifies the square footage under the city's existing development plan ordinance. As you can see, the two sites, two lots together, are entitled to 10,215 square feet of non-residential development. The proposed development involves 21,253 square feet, which leaves a remainder of 11,038 square feet. The applicant has proposed to get this square footage through a transfer of existing development rights from another site, although at this time, that site has not been identified. The main issue for the project, and the reason why the project is before the Planning Commission today, is the request for setback modifications along State Street, Mason Street, and Kimberly Avenue. The required setback in the HRC-2 zone is 20 feet, and that would apply to each of these street frontages. The project has proposed various setbacks along each street frontage and for each floor of the building. This exhibit shows the potential building footprint if the 20-foot setbacks were applied on each street frontage, and I do want to point out that the exhibit does include the realignment of Kimberly Avenue, and that's based on the most recent plans. The 20-foot setback based on the existing lot is also shown in dashed lines. So staff looks forward to comments from the Planning Commission, specifically about the modification requests, as well as the project in general, and I can answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. DeBusk. Any questions for Ms. DeBusk at this point? May we hear from the architect, Mr. Colonel?
Chair Lodge, Brian Cornell, members of the Commission. With me today is Mark Roma Santa, the property owner, and I want to start by expressing our appreciation for even being able to come to you conceptually. It's very important, I think, for projects to do that, and since I think Allison has very well outlined what our issues are, I just want to be able to explain where we're coming from, and then get your thoughts on whether we can proceed. So this is the big-picture overview of the property. Here you see it. So it's sort of smack dab clearly in the waterfront, and we believe very much a redevelopment site. Zooming in a little bit more, you can see it there. And just take note, I'll come back to this later, but, you know, when you begin to look at the pattern of development, I think you can see that the vast majority of buildings in this area obviously are not set back. This 20-foot HRC-2 setback, which has been around for at least as long as I've been in town, is something that never really made sense to me in this particular stretch of State Street. I understand it along Cabrillo, certainly, but because of the pattern of development, I think that it's something that is, you know, I know that we have struggled with it before on other projects. We worked years ago on what is now the youth hostel site. So then we're going to sort of just zip down here as if in a helicopter, and just make note of the surrounding development. It's interesting to see the Harborview Inn complex, which is obviously a dominant portion of Lower State Street, and then, of course, where the Entrada project is going to be located. I don't know why this is so green, but I apologize for that. I guess it's nice that it's green. So going on down, looking back towards the waterfront, the project site with the bus station, looking in the other direction, Allison has really already gone through these, so I'll quickly peruse them. You can see down Kimberly, the pattern of the buildings that are existing. This is the old 1903 Sanborn map, and I thought this was interesting. It actually, there's quite a history of laundries here, because this was the old Santa Barbara steam laundry. This little note here is pretty funny. It says, "Six employees, no watchmen, lights, lamps, irons heated by gas, fuel, crude petroleum fed into boiler by steam feeder." And this, the site then actually housed the Lockheed Brothers. This is probably around 1916, and it's interesting, this is looking on Mason. In fact, it almost looks as if they're assembling this plane on Mason Street, because you can see the identifiable storage building here that's behind the Entrada project. This is actually a shot looking across the street at the old gas station in that building. Not exactly what you'd call beach garb, right there. And then this is aerial from the '60s, when this area was predominantly auto dealers, so you can see, we think it's the '60s, because those look like large 1960, early 1960 cars, but the building, I mean, the site was actually covered with building at that time. So this is the parcel today. It's about 19,000 square feet. It's two parcels, actually, and as Allison pointed out, the laundry building that Harborview uses now. This, of course, was the original property line, and that got pushed back as part of the State Street improvements that were probably about 15 years ago. And then this is that approximate line of the Kimberly realignment. We've been kind of on a slow path as we have been developing this. You know, I'll tell you that the site was leased up until about two years ago or so by the, you know, the little company that had those trolleys, and I know the Roma Santas have been thinking about when would be the proper time to really complete their vision for Harborview. And, you know, with Entrada being such that it was, I think they've been trying to find the correct time, and then when we embarked on this project, of course, we began to work with Public Works on that Kimberly realignment. It's been going through its own process through HLC and with Creeks input. This is basically the footprint, and as Allison, well, I'll go back to that. This is the landscape plan for the site, and, you know, what I wanted to show you here is, first of all, this is that 20-foot setback again, and one of the things that I think is an important factor in your consideration is that we are setting the building back 10 feet off of that northern property line to allow for landscaping. You can kind of get a sense of the landscaping that we are proposing here. At the end of the day, really, this is about creating a project that is going to make sense to put on this site, and the most, because we're in a flood zone, we really can't consider anything like underground parking. Consequently, we've created a very rational and efficient parking lot here, 90-degree double-loaded parking, and have tried to minimize then the encroachment along Mason, but a couple of things we absolutely need is we need to recreate the laundry facility on the site, because there's no place else on the remainder of the Harborview to do that, and we obviously need some minimal lobby-type function. And so the parking, as always, seems to drive so much of what the building footprint is. The second-floor plan, here you can see, by the way, the setback from the existing top-of-bank. It's not completely clear what that will be in terms of the future top-of-bank, but, you know, we have obviously set back beyond that, and we are just about at the 50 feet if we assume that this will be that new top-of-bank. And then, of course, the third floor, we've stepped back from State Street, because we felt that was an important part of the appropriate massing of the site and to help mitigate at least that setback mod on the State Street side. And then the roof plan. Quickly through the elevations, this is the view from State Street. It's a fairly modest scale, 27 feet, set behind that existing bus stop. We are proposing to slightly extend the height of the wall, and we would have landscaping behind that wall. This is the massing from Mason Street. At the highest portion of the building, it's 37 feet. This is a one-way exit out of that parking. This is that one-story laundry element. This is a one-story lobby element. From the Mason Street side, where we're taking the primary vehicular access and our trash enclosure, right here.
You said Mason Street?
I'm sorry, Kimberly. Thank you. And then, of course, this is the north elevation with the California Hotel or the Californian Looking at a quick section in that direction through Mason Street, here is our building that's 37 feet, and this is the 45-foot height limit. And looking in the other direction, then, this actually depicts the original, where Kimberly is today and where the property line is, and then when Kimberly shifts and the property line moves. And then I thought I would throw in, as Bruce mentioned, he was kind enough to give us the model of the Entrada project, so we dropped it in, and this is a section looking through our project at that point. Of course, here you see, I'll just go back to that quickly, you know, as you all know very well, the existing property line is somewhere like here, and that is all new State Street improvements that will narrow that section of State Street. So again, looking at that section, you can see the massing of Entrada and our project. And of course, you know, on the Entrada is on the mountain side of State Street, and those view corridors were, as you know, very critical. So these were the photo sims that staff asked us to do to depict what mountain view blockage would result from the project, and so we ghosted in our building, and then that's more like the finished product. And we also do have, even though it's pretty hard to see because of the trees and whatnot, but we do have the Entrada project from the model that Bruce gave us in these photo sims. Looking at a little more of an angle, now, obviously, we are, you know, you can see we have a little bit of blockage of these mountains here, where I should say the top part of the mountains are blocked, but we obviously feel that this is a very secondary, if not even less so, viewing location from a standpoint of mountain views. From State Street, looking back towards the waterfront, I think this view really helps to depict why we wanted to step the building back. I think it helps a lot with the massing along there. And then looking in the other direction at the building again, I think that step back from two stories to three stories is very, very important. I didn't mention on the site plan, but we are preserving this plaza and putting in special paving that kind of creates a neat little labyrinth of sorts, and, because we think that the community is really used to that little plaza space, and it ought to be preserved, and that was one of the comments that HLC had for us. So, you know, back to where I started, I think the pattern of development is such that you really don't have many buildings along this section of State Street that respect that 20-foot setback. Obviously, you do have areas where there is relief, which is part of what the coastal zone identifies. Clearly, the pattern of development here is with buildings up to the sidewalk, which, you know, I believe is appropriate. So the modification is necessary. These are your findings, to secure an appropriate improvement on the lot. I think you can see from the slide that I showed with the setback that it really will impact our ability to do an appropriate number of rooms for this site, and so we believe that it does meet this criteria. As far as an unreasonable hardship is concerned, there obviously is going to be a taking associated with this property, and I know that the Roma Santas have already been working with Public Works on the whole creek realignment. In fact, they offered a part of their property for the planting of replacement sycamore trees as a result of sycamores that are being lost as part of that project, and we, believe me, want to continue that spirit of cooperation, but we think it would be a hardship to have to deal with a full 20-foot setback on all three sides. And then finally, promoting uniformity of improvement, we think the recent modification requests that have been granted to Entrada, as well as the pattern of development in this area, meets that criteria. So again, we appreciate your comments on this at this point, and hopefully we'll be able to move forward. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Colonel. Commissioners?
Shall I put just the site plan back up, or?
Okay.
Mr. Jordan?
Commissioner Jordan? I'll wait for Brian to get ready. Allison, when you have connected rooms in a hotel, you know, where you have two separate rooms, if they have a connecting door that can or can't be used, does that still count as two rooms for the parking requirement?
Commissioner Jordan, yes, that would count as two, two rooms.
And I know you're ready for these questions. Can you tell me about the, I'll just lump them all together, the public parking opportunities that will eventually be available at the law Entrada? I think I recollect something. And then what is the relationship of the current parking load versus the requirements for both the newly opened Indigo and the future Hotel California or Californian Hotel?
Ms. DeBusk?
I can repeat those.
Thank you. The current project had, or has, a total of 243 rooms proposed, I'm sorry, they're proposing 243 parking spaces. Of those...
Sorry, 243 parking spaces, and of those, 120 would be considered public parking, so they're in excess of what would be required for their project. So that takes into account parking for the Californian in that number. As for the Hotel Indigo...
And how many rooms are in the Californian also?
I don't have it broken down by...
Give or take.
...hotel area. I don't know with the new project. The total rooms for the Entrada project is 123. That's on all three sites. The hotel...
Is there a net number of parking spaces still available in the Entrada project after those two entities are loaded?
So the Entrada project with 123 hotel units requires 123 spaces.
Right.
So the net is 120 spaces that are available for public use in that Area C parking garage.
But some of them, some of those are being, are being used, so to speak, by the Californian?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The Californian spaces are accounted for in the remainder of the parking.
Where?
So it's 120 net spaces in excess of the requirement. So those are all public spaces.
Okay. Got it.
Or, that's included?
I think I have it.
Okay.
I'm not really sure I have it, but...
Yeah, there are also, of those, some, there are commercial parking spaces that were required for the Entrada project, and those are also within that parking garage.
I could say there's a good number of available parking spaces in the Entrada project, public parking.
There will be excess parking spaces, and it will be operated like a public lot similar to Paseo Nuevo.
Okay, and then the Indigo, how did it achieve its parking load?
That is an existing non-conforming hotel. They do not have parking on-site. They did not have parking before, and with the remodel, it did not require them to add any parking. I believe they do offer valet parking to their guests, however.
Okay. And then, Mr. Colonel, do you have anything, any photo, I'm not sure the answer's no, because you didn't show it, but is there not a photo simulation of standing on State Street, looking east, with the Entrada against the mountains? Do we not have that available today?
Well, I have it with our project. Mr. Colonel, could you come to the microphone?
I have it with our project in the foreground, so it's, I think I showed you that one. It's kind of hard to see Entrada, but it is, it is back there. But I don't have just Entrada from Mason... But I don't have just Entrada from Mason.
My question is, if I was, if I was standing on the Roma Santa empty lot right now, and the Entrada was already built, how much of the mountains would already be obscured before you build the...
Ah, she came prepared.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Allison.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Thompson, and then Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you. Maybe a very simple question for Mr. Carnell. There are several trees that the plan calls to remove. Are those mature trees, particularly the palms, planned to be relocated, or are you just going to remove and dump?
There is a large Canary Island palm that is on the site that we are removing, and then the other large trees is a cluster of eucalyptus that are right along Mason.
I'm not too worried about the eucalyptus, but it would be nice if the two Canary Island palms could be relocated somewhere, because they are nice specimens.
The reason that Arcadia was our landscape architect, and they recommended against that, because we asked them to do that, and the reason is, is apparently Canary Island palms have become increasingly challenging to transplant. They're subject to a disease, and they don't do well when they are transplanted. So that's why we opt not to.
You've at least looked at that option.
Yes.
I know they're not a user-friendly tree to move, to work around, but...
Yeah.
Okay. The other question had to do with the external stairway from the plaza going up to the first room floor. Is that planned to be a secured stairway so that anybody coming in would have to go through the lobby to gain access to the rooms? Or is that going to be an open-to-the-public kind of a stairway? Or have you even thought about that yet?
Well, we intend to have it open. I mean, actually, the, the recent additional rooms that Mark built just a couple of years ago has a similar stair from State Street, and it is open. It would be locked at, at night at the top of the stairs, but we weren't intending on having, you know, gates. And off-hours, we actually have a, so that there is elevator access. There'll be, there is a door located at this point right here, so a guest can use a key fab and get into the elevator lobby to go on up, or they can use those keys at the top of the stairs.
So it would be secure access depending upon the hour of the day, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Campanella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question for staff. On the 20-foot setback from the three streets in the waterfront area, has this been an absolute in the past, or have other modifications been granted in the surrounding neighborhood?
Mr. Campanella, other modifications have been granted. In fact, if we take a look at this exhibit, you can see both existing and proposed development. Most recently, the Children's Museum received a modification, although it wasn't for the building itself, it was for the trash enclosure, the ADA ramps to get up to the building. So it did have a mod on both State Street and Kimberly. Entrada received modifications on State Street and on Mason Street for all three areas of the project. And staff also approved a modification for a trash enclosure along Kimberly Avenue recently. So for this block area, those are the, the recent modifications that have been granted.
Okay, thank you. I know that I just roughly looked at this, but would be interesting to me when we look at modifications would be, assuming that there were no mods to the setbacks, and given the height that somebody could build to, is essentially how much square footage, including the parking garage, could be part of the shell? You know, if, if, before any modifications? And then compare that to the modifications being requested. In this case, for example, the height is lower, there's different setbacks, and I was just wondering if, if we're looking at size, bulk, scale is one of the issues, if whether the current design with modifications has less area under roof or impact than would be allowed if the modific, if there were no modifications on the setbacks. And it was built as a perpendicular plane, let's say, for three stories. I, I'm not ask, I presume you don't have that now, but it would be interesting, I think, that in evaluating whether a modification is good because it creates less of an impact, than if you, as a trade-off, I think would be good to understand as we try to make our evaluation. Let's see. And then, let's see, the top of bank, since the top of bank is going to be reinforced and structurally integral there on a perpendicular plane, would that be the measurement for setback versus a theoretical that would normally be on an angle, accounting for erosion over time? So you would, you would have an absolute point to refer to based upon what the final design of the creek improvements are. Is that correct?
Commissioner Campanella, the municipal code does include specific formula for determining the top of bank. For this specific site, I do want to point out that one of staff's considerations is that Kimberly Avenue will be between wherever that top of bank is and this site. So we weren't too concerned with calculating at this point the specific, you know, 25 feet from top of bank, 50 feet from top of bank, because in terms of bank failure or flooding, we're not concerned that that will be an issue based on other improvements.
Right, and as opposed to a rear yard where somebody, where the, the bank was in the rear yard of a private residence that was coming in with an application. A question for the applicant.
I was going to try and answer your question, but I'll come back to it.
No, if you want to go.
I think I can roughly answer, but I'm, I'm still figuring, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't think of that ahead of time, so you had a chance to calculate it. On the laundry room, which would be servicing, since it services the rest of the Harbor View Inn now, it'll be servicing all facilities out of that room. Is there mechanical equipment that goes on top of that roof for air handling, or...
No, but there is a, there is a shaft, which we've accounted for, so there is an exhaust shaft. And that mechanical system would, would sit within the laundry area and exhaust out.
Okay. So if, let's say if that were pushed back somehow and be part of the building, you'd still have to account for that on the top of the roof?
Yeah, we have it as a, it's a chimney element right now, yes, we'd have.
On the lower level? But on the lower level, or does it go all the way up to the top?
It goes all the way up to the top as a chimney, yes.
Okay.
So we would have to, yes, we've got to account for that regardless.
All right. I didn't know if that helped you on solar or not by having mechanical on that lower roof, and that gave you more area on the upper roof?
No, the lower roof, you know, that, that laundry is a one-story element, just really to help with the massing.
Okay.
And that is, that is deck area that serves the hotel rooms above.
All right, good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Excuse me, I'm just getting my voice back. My first quest, set of questions, I think, are for staff. In looking at the letter we just received from the Urban Creeks Council, I was wondering, Mr. DeBusk, if you have any thoughts for me on two items. First is, on page two, the suggestion that a request for setback modification on Kimberly or West Mason be deferred till the dimensions of the street and sidewalks have been determined from the Lower Mission Creek Project realignment that Commissioner Campanella referred to.
Mr. Carter?
I'd like to weigh in a little bit on that. Like, this is a concept review, it'll be a long time before we, before we come back here. Well, maybe not that long, but a while, before we come back here with the, the actual decision. And in that time, Public Works Department will be moving forward, you know, with the, with the final design. My understanding right now, though, is that the line of Kimberly, although not set in stone, is sort of like set in really, is like set in clay, you know? I mean, it's, it's virtually, it's virtually settled. And they don't anticipate that it'll move at all. So, so with, with that knowledge and the knowledge that is coming back, it is sort of is being deferred. We're not taking any action today, so...
Madam Chair, if I may...
Mr. Jordan.
Just pop into, it's my understanding that the, the talk over the width of the street and the sidewalks will involve, if that, if that mutates, will involve the western side of the street and not the eastern side where the hotel is. That there, that Creeks is interested in getting more space along the creek bank and moving that line into the street, not bringing the line on the other side of the street across. Does that, does that sound right?
I would say that's correct, yeah. Like I said, this, this side is pretty much set. If there's going to be any, any movement, it'll be on the other side.
And then also from the Creeks Council letter on the last page pertaining to transfer of existing development rights, I was wondering if you have here again any thoughts for me on possible consideration of transferring away from the parcel to what they refer to as a more remote area, to less sensitive environmental resource area of the city?
Chair Lodge and Commissioner Schwartz, for the first part of the question, in terms of the transfer of development rights onto this project site, that is a discretionary action, and that's something that the Planning Commission would need to make findings for before approving the project. With regard to transferring rights from this site off the site to another site, that would be up to the applicant at their, you know, it's something that they may choose to do. But it would also require us approving a development on this site, because they can't transfer rights that haven't been approved yet.
Okay. I, I don't know if, probably don't need to touch on that further today since it's a concept review unless, Mr. Carnell, you have a thought to share with us on that from the applicant's part.
Just, just real quickly, there, there are ample, there's ample square footage out there that's for sale. We've already approached by several people who would like to sell it. But I wanted to mention, besides buying it as square footage, we could also buy it as rooms. So there is a provision where, and there are rooms, for instance, the Old Creo Hotel had additional rooms that they didn't rebuild, and so theoretically, those rooms exist to be transferable. So there are two methods of, of transfer, and we would be opting for one of them.
Okay, thank you. Let me just continue on then for staff. I think lastly, because my other questions, Mr. Carnell, are for you, I, I'd like to touch on, first is my last question to staff, to Mr. DeBusk, Local Coastal Plan Policy 4.4, and, you know, Mr. DeBusk, I had a written communication with you on this. I'm interested in understanding what are, first of all, how to view this proposed project in the context of the Coastal Act's requirement around visitor-serving accommodations. And I know each project is taken into consideration on a case-by-case basis. In the coastal zone, though, I'm, I'm concerned about and interested in cumulative effects on providing the right balance of type of or, or financial level of accommodation. So could you comment on that? And I, I can stop there, because I think we're kind of all on the same page regarding where I'm coming from in this line of questioning.
Chair Lodge and Commissioner Schwartz, just quickly, so that everyone knows what we're talking about, Coastal Act Section 302103 states that lower-cost visitor and recreational facilities shall be protected, encouraged, and where feasible, provided. And the city's Policy 4.4 from our local coastal plan states that new hotel-motel development within the coastal zone shall, where feasible, provide a range of rooms and room prices in order to serve all income ranges. Within the city, we don't have a specific program for implementing that coastal policy. In general, we do tend to look at it on a more regional basis through the city's entire waterfront or coastal zone, and we do have some visitor or hotels-motel type development that is for those lower-cost travelers. Most recently, the hostel that's under construction. So that will go a long way towards meeting that in perpetuity. Also, that statement does state where feasible, so it is something, as you mentioned, we do on a case-by-case basis. And finally, we don't know the range of these rooms, what they will be going for. They are on the smaller side, so I don't know if they will be rented at similar rates to the existing Harbor View rooms, or if they will be a slightly different amount. The Coastal Act does specifically say that the room prices will not be set in stone. That's part of their policy, is that they won't mandate that.
Well, I'm remembering that the hostel, correct me if I'm wrong, was a mitigation for the Fest Parker project. And so, you know, we do have some, some history of trying to balance out the, the approved new higher-end visitor accommodations with, with those that are more either at-market or below-market. I don't know what the terminology might be there.
That is correct.
Or a mitigation fee possibly be paid into, like we recently saw with the Miramar, Mr. Caruso paying the 1.4 million into the County Parks and Rec, that kind of thing. So I can talk to you more offline about this. I'm, I'm interested in how we achieve a balance in the coastal zone, and I don't need to go further today. I'll just tee that up, and we can have more discussion if you like. Mr. Carnell, did you want to share some thoughts?
Chair Lodge, Commissioner Schwartz, yes. Well, I, in my initial discussions with Mark, really, this property has always been thought of as, as creating accommodations that would broaden the, the realm of rooms that Harbor View has. These are obviously, as Allison mentioned, these are smaller rooms. We also intentionally incorporated two-bedroom suites that would serve more families, because right now, the Harbor View only has one-bedroom suites. And then in addition, these are obviously in a, in a less desirable location, so I think the Roma Santas have always thought that these are going to be lower-priced rooms to create that balance within there. And, you know, they're, they're business people, obviously, and are going to keep their rooms at a, at a rate that are going to be rentable. So I think that's the, that is the big-picture goal for Harbor View in terms of building this project.
Well, I still have you up here, Mr. Carnell, if I could. I'd like to go back to parking, if I may. And when we were at the site on Tuesday, it appeared to me that, that the lot, the parking lot is currently used as overflow. Would that be correct for the Harbor View Inn currently?
Well, it's really, it's, it is surplus right now. Again, when that lease ran out a few, a couple of years ago, they did not re-lease the property and have used it as, as surplus. So for instance, they do have, some employees do park there at times when, when, say, you know, if, if somebody comes and stays and they've got a, a daughter at UCSB, she would be able to come and park in that lot. So that's, that's what it is used for now. It frankly is rarely full. If you drive by, you'll see that. It's in, in, you know, for Harbor View, I can tell you, for Mark, it's been, it's a real challenge, because they're constantly having people who try to park there, obviously, and, and that's a liability. So they really want to, you know, eliminate that problem and, and don't feel that they need the surplus. If there is ever a problem in terms of occupancy and there is a need for overflow, they would initiate a valet system that would manage that overflow.
So is it 34 spaces that, no, 34 rooms?
It's one space per room.
And one space per room, I think.
Yeah, that's the ordinance requirement. That's correct.
The new project. I'm just trying to align that with the need, your parking need at the current Harbor View, and where, how this is all going to kind of synchronize in the area without impacting on-street parking.
Understood.
Yeah. Okay, I'll just note that for the record, and as we move forward, we can try to tackle that. Also, Mr. Carnell, can you tell me a little bit about the, the nighttime lighting? I'm looking at your photo simulation State Street view here and wondering what we can expect to see during the night with that.
To be honest, Commissioner Schwartz, we haven't thought about what the lighting would be. You know, I can tell you that, again, that little plaza element is something we want to enhance and, and maintain.
Okay.
But I think the lighting frankly would be as, as low a level as we can achieve and still have reasonable security at night.
Okay. When we get to comments, I'll, I'll share those with you. Then lastly, there's mention here in terms of green, green elements, green design elements, and there's reference to, let's see, this is the pre-app document, page four of 16, references solar panels. Are you in a position today to tell us anything about taking advantage of green design elements, or is that still being worked out as well?
Well, I mean, that's, that's, as a firm, it's very important to us. And, and yes, we're going to, to strive for as much as we can. We do have a large, flat-roofed area that Mark and I have discussed as being ideal for solar panels. And right now, assuming we don't have large equipment up on that roof, which is what we're striving for, we would be able to utilize that. And, and there's going to be a lot of... that. And there's going to be a lot of other, obviously, methods of construction and things that we can do to, you know, achieve a nice, sustainable level.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Schwartz, Commissioner Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Brian, don't sit down yet. Sorry to overwork you today, but I'm glad you're here with a great presentation for a concept review.
I'm pleased to be here, thank you.
And, you know, I've seen this corner be many things. It's been so interesting, but to have that little history provided with the Lockheed brothers and everything, boy, that just screams for a little plaque or something there, you know? It's really interesting who's been in our midst. Anyway, that being said, could you do me a favor, since this is early on, realizing that your plans aren't finalized, and just kind of describe the pedestrian experience along State Street? Because I'll give you a heads-up on my concern. My concern is, is that we've got a high wall and a gate and no landscaping proposed. So if you could just give me a sort of a feel for that. On the plans, I see the wall, and then I see two feet behind it. I'm not sure if I'm reading this right, but it looks like two feet, and it's green, shaded green on the topographic, on the site and garage level plan. And maybe I'm just not reading it correctly, but I want to make sure from you that I am.
No, Commissioner Larson, that's correct. I mean, we are providing planting on the other side of that wall that we intend to reach up above the wall. And because the wall exists now and that edge of State Street is more or less finished, and frankly, because of the fact that we are placing parking here, which is not a desirable thing to look into, the wall really works as, in maintaining that edge of State Street. And then the little gate that you mentioned, that now is, I have a photo of it if you want to see it, but it was originally, we actually did these State Street improvements back in the early 90s.
I remember when they went in.
And there was a phone booth there, which is long gone, of course. So we thought, gosh, that's a perfect little place to just put a little doorway, which would serve as an exit door out of this, out of this parking. But we do have a large, you know, area to provide for a skyline tree in this corner, which we think will help. And if I can, let me just, if I may, switch to another view of this. So again, you know, that, that experience along State Street really remains, and we don't show the landscaping that's going to be above this, but the ability to get additional landscaping here, maintain the jacaranda that's in this location. You know, the idea there is that we really aren't encouraging pedestrian activity until we come to this plaza, in which case then we have a, you know, gracious entry to the hotel on the stairs going up. So.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Busk, the setbacks that are, there's 20 feet all the way around, except on the interior one, and I appreciate the fact that they pulled the building back from the interior lot line, and I believe Mr. Carnell said it was 10 feet back where it isn't required. How much of a modification, if this, if these setbacks were approved, how much of the, would the modifications be on each side, on each of the street frontages?
Commissioner Lodge, the setbacks vary depending on the street and also the floor of the building, but in general, I can tell you that along State Street, the first floor is setback approximately 12 feet, although, as you'll note, there is that parking in front of it. The second floor is setback seven feet, and the third floor is setback 42 feet. Along Mason Street, the setback ranges from six to eight feet at its minimum. There are areas where the building jogs in and is setback 12 feet, or even about 19 feet from Mason Street. And then on Kimberly, if we look at the anticipated future realignment, the setback, it's really, there's no setback along, along Kimberly. The trash enclosure would go right up to that property line, and the building would be setback approximately one foot. Right, and at its minimum location.
All right. And the second floor, seven-foot setback from State Street is because of the balconies? Is that correct?
Chair Lodge, that is correct. The balconies include a roof structure, which means that we count them as part of the building.
All right, I guess that those are the only questions that I wanted to get clarified. So we could go to comments now, unless there are more questions. Mr. Jordan, Commissioner Jordan.
I think a couple more. Mr. Carnell, I think there's a few. So going back to that, you don't have to go back to that view, but that view of the State Street wall, how high is that that you're proposing?
I think we have it at six feet. I will check.
Okay, but so.
It's just adding a couple of feet.
And if I'm looking over that, and there's nothing green there yet, am I actually looking into the parking garage? Open, then?
Yes, because there's access to those two, two parking spaces.
And in the center, it looks like maybe in the center, in the, where the two garage, the two cars are nestled in, there might be a wall behind them, but in the center part, you're looking through the whole garage, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And let me just, if I may, I just want to.
If you may, I want to check and make sure what we did draw that, because we may have. We did draw that as six feet.
Okay, so I'd be over, I'd be able to look over it. And then can you tell me why you need two driveways? Or, you know, one I know is an entrance and exit, and the other one's just an exit, right? But why, why do you need the one on Mason is really my question.
Primarily just to provide, if for any reason a car came in and there were no parking spaces, it's a way to get out without having to do a U-turn down at the end and provide a turnaround within the parking area.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? Mr. Commissioner Campanella.
Yeah, just so I'm clear, on the setback to the north, not on the street, on the interior setback, is that a 20-foot requirement, or is that zero?
It's zero.
Okay. But you're providing, in most spots, you're providing a 10-foot setback. Is that correct?
Yes. And we are doing that so that we can provide light and air into the hotel rooms per the building code. So from a building code standpoint, we're providing that, but it does obviously add relief and articulation onto what otherwise would be a blank wall.
One more question. The trash enclosure, is that, I presume at this point it's not a final design that's been approved by the, by the city, or has it?
No, no, nothing. We're conceptual here. There's absolutely nothing that's been approved at all. We have reviewed it with Marborg, and we obviously have it so that the door does not open onto Kimberly. It's open from the side.
And that would depend really on the size of the dumpsters or whatever you would need. However, this would be a low use as far as trash is concerned, because you're just talking about individual rooms. So you're showing something less, of less quantity size or volume that you would need to handle.
Well, we actually, there is a trash enclosure on the site now, and we've accounted for the rooms and that, that trash, and we've reviewed that with Marborg. So what we have there in terms of capacity is adequate.
Good. So it looks like that side gate near, in back of a landscaped area would work.
Yes. Yeah, they have okayed that. If I may, the question that you had roughly, if we could go.
Let me go back to, again, this site plan.
So you asked the question of if, essentially if we, let me click this one more time. So there's that 20-foot setback. So if we respected the setback and we took all of this square footage and, and accounted for within the setbacks, this square footage on the ground, the rooms upstairs here, and the, a little bit of square footage up there is, is just about 3,800 square feet or so. And if I take the portion of the building that is two stories, that could be three stories, and I put three stories on top of that, that's about 3,400 square feet. Now, of course, if I filled up, you know, if I filled this area up with building, you know, I would eas, you know, would more easily be able to get out of the setbacks, but obviously that becomes problematic relative to having windows on that side of the building. So it's not too far off in terms of equivalent square footage that would leave the area within the setbacks and go into a third-story portion on the front part of the building.
And any other questions from the commissioners? I'm not seeing anyone. Is there anyone from, I'll open the public hearing part. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this proposed project?
We did have a letter from Creeks.
Yeah, I'll mention the letters. All right, not seeing anyone. We'll close that part of the discussion. We do have two letters from the public, one already mentioned, from the Santa Barbara Urban Creeks Council with their interesting suggestion that rather than bringing square footage to the site, that square footage be sold away, development, square footage be sold away. And we have a letter from Paula Westbury, who says, her handwriting's a little, "Please, please never develop this historic site. The whole hotel would fall down in an earthquake." So I was probably thinking of the 1925 earthquake in the California Hotel, which lost an exterior wall. All right, let's go to comments then from the commissioners. Everybody rush to speak first. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very briefly, I'll say that, first of all, I think, seems to me this is an adaptive reuse project. It's an appropriate area, and I think it adds to the vitality and revitalization of this area of Lower State Street. I think that the applicant team and Mr. Carnell, you thus far done a beautiful job at both the mass bulk and scale, the architectural design, trying to express respect for the scale and the cherished public views, especially kind of looking down and looking up State Street. I'll look forward to the next iteration of this to see how we can incorporate what the applicant needs or what the Roma Santa family needs, along with the realignment of the Lower Mission Creek project. And I think to the extent that we can reflect our history in some sort of a memorialization of the Lockheed brothers, that would be great. I was listening to Commissioner Larson's comments and thinking about all the different chapters of Santa Barbara history. It's so easy to literally pave over, literally pave over our history and to very quickly forget what has, what and who have come before us. And so I think that's part of what makes Santa Barbara special, and the only way to do that in some cases is to have it be very visible. So I'll look, look forward to how you might incorporate that. I think through some of my line of questioning, I've probably already highlighted some of my areas of interest that I'll be looking for when it comes back to the commission. And to me, on the whole, I think you're going in the right direction, and I look forward to following the project. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, as usual, Mr. Carnell's come forward with a well-thought-out plan. Good job. I particularly want to compliment you for keeping that corner open in a courtyard. That'll make it a lot more pedestrian-friendly. And along the State Street side, where you're asking for a modification, I think there's probably justification for some modification, especially since you're proposing to keep the wall. However, I would say you may rethink your idea about raising the wall to six feet, because that's going to be less pedestrian-friendly than a lower wall as it exists. And I'm really not too much in favor of parking cars in that basically what is your front yard courtyard. I know you're trying to get the required number of car parking spaces to maximize the number of rooms in the building, but I think you really ought to rethink that as far as using that open front courtyard as a car park for two cars, which also then forces you to have a driveway opening in the building. So pedestrians walking down State Street, which is basically, as I said, your front yard, what's their view of your building? It's a big car park inside there. So I think you can do a lot better by eliminating the cars, keep the wall at a more pedestrian-friendly height. As far as the Mason Street side, as we've talked about before years ago, I think that an articulated building facade in the, what would be a setback zone is much preferable to having a flat wall face going up a couple of stories that meets the setback requirement. So I would be in support of your proposal on the Mason Street side because the variable articulation of the building provides a lot more visual interest and public friendliness than just having a wall that met the setback. As far as the modification on Kimberly, I think when you get into it a little further, perhaps a little more building articulation might help to make that modification more approvable. And I think we need to know a little bit more about the realignment of Kimberly Avenue before we commit one way or the other as far as modifications on that side. I just wonder if it finally is determined that Kimberly's going to be a one-way street, if we don't narrow the street, if that doesn't change your plans and your requirements there. So I'm going to withhold any real comment about the Kimberly side, other than I think based upon your initial input here, it might need to have more articulation. Those are my basic comments on your existing proposal. I think you've done an excellent job.
Commissioner Larson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, our dream will come true here, and we will be flooded with pedestrians in this area, I'm sure. I remember in the 80s when Rocky Galenys was happening and Omelets, et cetera, was there. I used to have a 90-minute wait for breakfast on a Saturday, and there would be people all up and down State Street there. And that's, and we're going in that direction. And I'm very grateful because if you walk to the aquarium in Monterey, you pass black hole after black hole and rusty rebar and all kinds of stuff because they, they don't have it done yet, and it's just been that way for decades, probably because of lawsuits. But I'm very grateful that this is evolving. I do, my comment, my, first of all, I, I'll comment on the mods first. I certainly can support the Mason Street. And the Kimberly, I'm uncertain about it, to be truthful, because it's not, I'm not, either I'm not understanding it completely, or, and that's being very honest about it, but really, I'd like to see what's evolving there first before I can make a really good decision about it. The other thing is the pedestrian experience on State Street, which I'm very concerned about. I would, and Commissioner Thompson mentioned it, but I was going to bring up the parking of the cars in the front. And that just seems like the no-brainer to have that wall stay low and have this be part of the experience of your plaza. And I think that considering what's going on across the street, the narrowing of State Street, we're going to have people, you know, going back and forth, back and forth, up and down there. I think it'd be very interesting to come up with another solution and still have this available for pedestrian, for landscape. You know, what a great place to watch the street scene from. And if you, you know, if you had, I don't, I can't describe what you're going to have there, but suppose you had a continental breakfast or something, and you had some umbrellas and tables out there. That would bring life right there to that corner. That would be terrific. So I'm hoping that you'll consider something else when you come back that really promotes that State Street pedestrian experience. You know, we say that word like it's so trite, but it's so important. And when you're walking along a long expansive wall, you just don't have it. And we all. And we all rush along those areas, just, just to get it over with, especially, you know, no landscape, maybe somebody takes a leak on it or something, you know, and you're stuck walking along there. Yuck. So I'm just hoping that, that that can open up and improve the experience of the pedestrians, as well as serve your property some way. So those are my comments. I find the architecture's really pleasing. Any green incorporating you can do, of course, would be very welcome. Traffic management's going to be extremely important for two reasons: the creek and the drainage of the creek, and the aesthetics, the smell, everything that's on that, you know, right in that area. Because as we, as the walls go up, the odors stay in. So that's something to consider. And if you can eliminate that one driveway, that would be terrific, and have your ingress and egress be consolidated into one. It would, it would really facilitate things. I didn't look for bicycle parking or any of that, but I would certainly take that into consideration as well. I think that's about it. Thanks again for a great concept presentation. It really makes a difference when we can have this level of detail in a concept hearing. Although I will say I do miss Brian's sketches, so, because they're also very interesting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jordan. Commissioner Jordan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm in agreement with all three of the mod requests, conceptually, and in their application. I'll talk a little bit about the one on State Street, that's probably my least favorite. But generally, I think you're on a lot that's already constrained, and it's going to be constrained further by the, by the realignment of Kimberly. But I think when you look at what you've portrayed today, that the setbacks in particular on Kimberly and Mason are not high-traffic areas. You don't see a lot of pedestrians there already. The views that are being affected aren't affecting a lot of people. And I think on all three sides where the setbacks are, you're already offering some better relief in articu-- in articulation than are found on your adjacent properties, even ones that are going to be redeveloped. I will echo a couple of comments you've heard on the State Street setback and the two cars parked in front. My particular take on that is I'd give you back those two parking spaces as a requirement. I'd rather see a parking mod request and lose those two parking spaces and get some more setback space there. And I'm going to go through some other notes here, and I'll give you some ideas conceptually, since that's why we're here, on givebacks to the community in terms of the, of the number of mods you're asking. You know, what'll come out eventually is that you got three mods. They won't talk about each particular mod's characteristic, characteristics, it'll just be the sheer number of mods you got, three. And so I have some comments on that. And I'm happy on the fly, you're probably about the only guy that walks in here on the fly who can do that math really quick, because I thought that was a great suggestion on comparing the, the cubic foot building envelope to the, the loss or the gain of the, of the modification setbacks. I think on, on, on every side of the building, you're still consistent with your surroundings. I, I think you're, you're graciously falling into the city's plan on the realignment of the creek. And then I'm just going to kind of wander my ways through the PRT report, because I know there were specific issues there. When you're talking that State Street setback, in my vision, if you lose those two parking spaces and something else happens to that area, a couple suggestions I would have on whatever ended up on the facade of that building, so that you wouldn't be looking through the cavern of the parking lot, could be a combination of some type of enhancement of the bus stop, some type of county arts commission mural or artwork on the side of your building that, that kind of blends in with the tile work that's already on the bus stop. I'm constantly amazed that down at the waterfront, there's never a mural or a map that's permanent that shows me where to go on State Street and what I can find. There's probably some real artsy things that could be done down in that area that would work in well with that little plaza. One of the comments and concerns was about the canyonization along Mason Street, and I find that the height of your building being almost 10 feet less than the, than the adjacent hotel across the street and their articulation actually makes that a pleasant look, rather than if you were even smaller, say if you were one story, sitting next to a 47 or 45-foot building on the other side, that would look even stranger, I think. This'll be, I'm not really sure on the timing of the prior Harborview Inn annex across the creek, but if the timing didn't make it into the stormwater management plan, this will be the first Tier Three project down in that region. So I know Creeks has asked for a 50-foot setback from the future Top of Bank. I would be satisfied with what you're offering, knowing that you're also going to have to comply with the Tier Three stormwater management plans. And I would, I would offer you the, the suggestion that maybe you visit with Creeks and see if you can also contribute to some of the, some of the improvements along the bank, or what will be the new bank on the eastern side of the creek. I'm continually unimpressed with the bridge projects that basically do the bridge and then leave the rest of the reforestation or the habitat repair to either Measure B, or it just doesn't happen at all, as it will when they do the Chapala Street Bridge up further. They'll continue to leave that hardscape there, because they don't have money to do anything with it. So if there's something, again, that you could offer there, that would be a great, a great carrot for consideration of the number of modifications also. And conceptually, if you were looking for things to do down in that plaza area, too, and if you move the, move those parking spaces out of there, I can tell you, as a downtown organization host, I spend many Saturdays during the summer across the street at hot spots, trying to lug tables and chairs and promotional stuff in and out of a small closet and hot spots. What a great thing to figure out a way to offer would be, would, would be a small area of storage or some type of incorporation into that program, that you could offer either storage space or some type of signage that's on a permanent basis, that would mix right in with the, both the trolley and the, the bus stop to, and it, and it serves your purpose, too, obviously. I could just keep having fun with concept reviews, couldn't I? I think that's pretty good. I, I think you'll get some more good ideas, and I think that's probably enough writing for the moment. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Capanella.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really like the way this design came out and how it, you know, really breaks up the massing. It's good, I think, that we have the short wall or the short side of the lot is on State Street, which, you know, cuts down on the massing to begin with, as, as opposed to the long side of the building. And by being across the street from the, from the hotel, you're able to sort of break it up along that street, rather than having two long walls. So I think, you know, that's good, it really makes that area look, look very good. As far as the two extra parking spaces, I think there were some good suggestions, including maybe lowering that entry a bit, more landscaping. I think when you're, when you come back again at, maybe with HLC, that some more simulations be done of what's actually in place with the trellis and the seating, and try to blend some solutions in that you feel might be appropriate. In one case, maybe the parking gets removed, maybe in another case, it stays, depending of, in my mind, depending on what you can do to screen it, to screen that area. I also presume that those might be the last two spots that are filled up. You can't promise that, but I, I would guess your parking would be more inside the garage than in those two spaces. I like the modifications I'm, I'm in favor of, because the articulation you provided, and you're still within your total volume. One thing, just personal thing I like is the, the corner and the gathering spot. I've stayed at the Harborview itself, and I've had guests at the Harborview and other motels. And normally, when you try to get together, you say, "I'll meet you on the corner." And then you're looking for each other, "What corner did you mean, and where is it?" And you can't find each other, and you have, especially when people might be up in their rooms and have to come down and find a spot of orientation. But I think this becomes a dramatic gathering spot where people can meet people. I think if you make it user-friendly with the tree, and maybe even kids running around it because of the pattern that you've got, I, I think it would serve a purpose, not only for the community, but also for guests who are assembling to do other things down in the area. So those are my comments, and I put those together with the comments of the other commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Capanella. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add to what Commissioner Jordan said. I forgot to mention it before, when I said that I think you ought to reevaluate keeping the wall along State Street same height than eliminating the two car parks in front and the drive aisle through the front of the building. I was going to also say that I would be more in favor of a parking mod than having two parking places in the front yard. So I support Commissioner Jordan's suggestion in that regard.
Well, there have been a lot of comments made by my colleagues that I agree with. I certainly am able to support some modifications, since this is not only a corner lot, it's a two-corner lot. Well, the one corner there and the other corner over there. However, the question is just how much. I, I do have a real problem with the State Street frontage and the comments about the height of the wall. I agree with Commissioner Thompson that it should remain no higher than it is. One of the purposes of the, this particular zone is to preserve a sense of openness. And what is being suggested with a six-foot-high wall is just going to close it off entirely and would really detract from the pedestrian experience here. I'm sure there are other things you can do, and if necessary, but modification for two parking spots is something that I could support as well. I'm sure the, this is certainly a great site for people to take the train to Santa Barbara and just walk to the hotel. And so they wouldn't, you know, perhaps there wouldn't be as, as big a demand for cars as there might otherwise be. And granted, the La Entra was granted zero setback in some areas, but they have a huge setback, way over what is required in the plaza, and somewhat similar for the hostel. So although they, they did get zero, or, you know, reduced the modification on the setbacks, they, there was much more given in terms of openness, which does not exist here. I, too, on the Kimberly end, I guess, I, too, am kind of, because we don't really know what's going to be happening there yet, although, even though staff's pretty sure this is, this is the line, I would like to see a little more setback there. And I guess that concludes my comments. Any other comments from my colleagues? If not, Mr. Carnal, you have a question for us.
Thank you so much. Those were really very helpful, and I appreciate it. I think we should always do this, because it's just better. I do have a question for staff, if that's okay, relative to the notion or the idea of maybe a parking mod. Because this is in the coastal zone, and we, you know, there's pretty strict interpretation or, or, or policy relative to having to meet your parking demand, I gather that if, if we could demonstrate that we would meet demand, whether it's, you know, demonstrating the train usage or whatever, theoretically, the mod would be something that we could pursue?
Theoretically, I think that's something we could look at. As you mentioned, parking demand is the key. It would absolutely need to meet parking demand.
Okay. Well, these have been great suggestions. Mark, I don't know if you have any thing that you'd like to add. It's really appreciated. It's very, very helpful. It gives us direction for moving forward.
All right, that concludes that item, and brings us to item four, which is the administrative agenda, committee and liaison reports. Commissioner Larson, that's their report on the staff hearing officer.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the staff hearing officer did not meet and won't meet again, so we have a canceled meeting, so there's no report from the staff hearing officer. However, HLC, since I usually just dovetail right into that, interestingly, had the review after final for the 500 Fowler Road, which is the airport, moving the tower, the old airline terminal facility. The, and 2300 Garden Street had the East Side neighbors' visit, the, the meeting, and it is continued, and at their request and the request of many, the item, which is the, the Garden Street, Garden Street Academy, I believe it's called, the Old St. Anthony Seminary, is continued indefinitely for master planning, so that they're not piecemealing their changes. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Commissioner Capanella.
Yes, Madam Chair, if I can, for Councilmember Schwartz, who his voice is a little bit leaving us, I think. She's been a good trooper today. But I attended Downtown Parking Committee this morning, and one of the items of interest was a presentation by Traffic Solutions on a Smart Ride, real-time ride-sharing program that they've received funding for from the Federal Highway Administration grant. And what this is intended to look at are, are two things. One, with a proposed high occupancy vehicle on the horizon for 101, is, is there a way to encourage people from outlying areas, Ventura, Oxnard, to try to pair up, buy either iPhone or Android, and start to find out where other people may be that can pick them up and take them in, so they don't have to drive their car? So these are unrelated people that can do that by software, by plugging in and find out where the people are, what time would they leave? And then with the success being based on finding a really, a, how can I call it? I guess a neck area where, you know, they're coming from Ventura, they're going to go out to Colita, downtown airport, and try to concentrate on having enough volume and pickup points that people can casually get together if somebody needs to get home or hear and create some type of relationship. They've surveyed 3,000 drivers to try to get some ideas on what people would do. There's a lot of concerns that need to be addressed relative to, how do I know what type of person this is, and, you know, things that they can, they feel they could get around. It's been done successfully in a number of cities, but the idea is to try to pair people up. And also, I think like in the Bay Area, you'd arrange a pickup spot, maybe near a bus station, you know, one of the Clean Air Express or Coastal Express lines, where if your ride doesn't show up, you have a backup plan. And also, there's a high concentration of people that would be gathering there anyway. The second part of it is to look at, for example, the amount of students that go to City College but live out in Isla Vista. And I think they mentioned, right now, there's like four full-up buses that come in at certain times, they, but that's just for that particular peak hour, but also trying to track the students, which is probably good, because they're the ones that are, got a little technical knowledge and know how to communicate with each other to find out where to go. The other part about the students would be if there was some type of incentive that was offered to the driver, that would really be important to a student that's on a limited budget for actually picking the people up and sharing some costs. So this, this is going to be undertaken, and they went before the Downtown Parking Committee to see perhaps how mutual interests can be arranged as they go through their program. That might be also consideration for the committee as well. And that might be, you know, what's alleviating the need for parking in some of the commuter lots and also some of the downtown lots, because the workers that are coming in now wouldn't be driving their own vehicles. And the incentive, of course, is getting into the, ultimately saving costs, but ultimately getting into the high occupancy vehicle lane and be able to get to town quicker. Also, when we were at their, Commissioner Schwartz and I, when we were at their planning meeting, we did suggest that, you know, with the Santa Barbara Plan, that some, you know, we'd like to coordinate with downtown parking, because the number of things we'll be looking at as we look at more mixed use and other intensity downtown is the parking issue. And then, and then they did make that part of their plan for the year, is to coordinate with us and other agencies in the city as part of the Santa Barbara. with us and other agencies in the city as part of the Santa Barbara plan update. So I wanted to report on that, and it was a very informative meeting this morning.
Thank you. Commissioner Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Single-family design board had five projects to review on their agenda this week, and so they're continuing along at about the same pace. None of the projects are of major interest to the planning commission, other than the one we just recently reviewed at 1202 Shoreline is already up for single-family design review. So they're moving along very fast.
Commissioner Capanella, you had something else to add?
No, I'm sorry. For those who either saw it, were here or saw it on, on TV, the city council implementation is moving forward on the AUD program. And I thought that, you know, I saw a very, a lot of positive comments on moving forward. And I think one that was really good was, you know, some of the things we're talking about today, that is part of the process that we're looking at, is to get other staff people and other departments working together at the same time. And, you know, we just had the issue today of, can we mod two parking spaces? So, you know, are there, on the horizon, more public parking plans that may be going forward where we could start to maybe accommodate that, or some off-site parking that could be done in the area, just as an example? But also size, bulk, scale issues and things like that, you know, as we go down the line. The more we, I think the city council is looking at, the more we can work together with staff to begin with, as we try to formulate suggestions. And the experience they have with modifications, I don't, you folks do, but modifications that have occurred before for various reasons, as we come up with suggestions for modifications on some of the current ordinances to get the AUD to work, I think that would be invaluable to get that input as, as we're ruminating our own ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? If not, I'll go to the Water Commission, which met on Monday and had a report on progress being made on the issue of simply moving forward on the fish along the San Diego River and the EIR that's been done. And there was a hearing on which comments would even be accepted on it. And the hearing officer ruled that about 90% of them would not be accepted because they weren't specific to what the EIR was about. But that is, that is making some progress. The main issue that was discussed was the settlement of the lawsuit brought by Channel Keeper over sewer leaks. It was very disappointing to many on staff, since the city was already doing what this lawsuit is, has, has put in a, in a consent decree, perhaps not as fast as Channel Keeper wants, but the end result of all of this is that, and there was some $700,000 worth of legal fees, about half of that for Channel Keeper and the other half on the city side, that are going to have to be paid for through an increase in the wastewater rates of about 6%. And there, and the whole project will really be under Channel Keeper's surveillance. And there, quite a few of us thought this, this lawsuit was entirely unnecessary. It came about partly because the, there was a study done, working with someone from UCSB that was more sophisticated and showed up more issues that wouldn't have been found, and which then were leaned on by Channel Keeper. And there's a feeling among some that the end result's going to be that cities or other purveyors of wastewater services are going to be very careful about finding out more about what they might do, which is unfortunate. But the city's going to have to spend 900,000, a minimum of 900,000 a year for the next five years, replacing high-risk sewer lines. And repair, rehabilitate or replace high-risk pipes. The city shall not be required to spend more than 900,000, but if we spend, the city spends less, then it gets carried forward to the following year, because of the total amount over the five years, this has to be, meet this ma, this max, this minimum amount. Okay. Anything else to report on? If not, that concludes the agenda for the planning commission, and the meeting is adjourned.